We're going to call the meeting to order. We start each one of our meetings with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would care to participate, please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to grant it unto us, the Lord. And we pray that, Father, that all things will be done decently and in order. And we pray to God that every issue will be resolved in some manner or so. And God, that you will give direction and guidance to each person that will come to present on today. And, Lord, that everything will be done just and fair. Now we ask, Lord, God, all these blessings, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey and Ms. Hart. All right, so I'm going to make some opening remarks on the procedures for the speakers when they come to the podium. So again, welcome to the PZC Open Remarks and Procedures. This is our area where we talk about how and what we do at the podium. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have PZC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your name, your address, and your zip code before addressing the board. We will give each case, we will call each case on the agenda in order and hear from the applicant than those speaking in favor of an application. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes will be allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or you can access it on our website at shreveportcatompc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the PZC board's zoning recommendations are submitted to the parish commission for a final decision. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the governing body about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony, and we appreciate your compliance with these guidelines. Okay, that takes us to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the approval of minutes from our May 24, 2023 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion to approve from Mr. Marshy. A second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, second. Could you break up the portal to vote, please? All right, on a six to zero, those minutes are approved. All right, that takes us to our first scheduled public hearing, case number, Agenda Item Six, Case Number 23-3P, a rezoning from Rayleigh and Associates Incorporated. Is anyone here from Rayleigh and Associates to speak on behalf of this application? Okay, seeing none. Do we have anybody in the audience that would, anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? All right, is there anybody here to speak against the application? All right, seeing none. It's my understanding from our work session that we had a request to withdraw this application. Mr. Jean?
That is correct.
Okay, so I don't see anybody here for or against the application. So I guess at this point, if there's no need for discussion among the board, we could take a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the withdrawal of the application.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Marshy to accept the request for withdrawal of the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Hart. Okay, can you bring up the voting portal, please? All right, six to zero in accepting the application for deferral. That takes us to Agenda Item Seven, Case Number 23-6BAP, special exception use for Georgette White. Is someone here that is the primary spokesperson for this case? You please step forward and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Georgette White. My address is 5237 Old Moines Fort Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. And I would like to be able to put a manufactured home onto the land of 5237 Old Moines Fort Road.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. White?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. Do we have anyone here that's in opposition of this application? All right, seeing none. Board, do we have a need for discussion? Are you good down here, Mr. Humphrey? Y'all good? Okay, all right, so then we're looking for a motion on this.
I move that we approve the special exception use of a manufactured home for Case Number 23-6BAP, special exception use.
Okay, the chair will second that?
Second.
Okay, I got it. Okay. Ms. Hart, thirded. Okay, all right, any need for discussion? Okay, can we bring up the port?
Wait a minute.
Okay. Hold on just a second.
I believe there were some stipulations to the front of the property.
Okay, you want to read those? I might have Mr. Marshy read the stipulations per the staff report so we can get that on record, please, so that everybody's, you know, clear understanding of what's going to be expected here. Go ahead, Mr. Marshy.
We're asking that incorporate a dominant feature on the front entry to the manufactured home.
Does it give any specifications on exactly what they're looking for or will the staff be working with them, Mr. Jean, on that?
I think the staff will put that on.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. We just work with them.
Okay, so you'll be working with the MPC on these, what do they call, stipulations?
It's just fancy stage correct.
Well, they'll get with you on that. We just want to make sure you understand that there'll be some additional conversation you'll be having with the staff.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
Okay, all right. Any other, we just want to make sure we got that on record. Any other need for discussion? All right, we have a motion. Mr. Jean?
Well, she did submit a revised site plan on this that we discussed and that included that dominant feature.
That's why they didn't include it.
So we're good?
Yeah, yeah, that's why they didn't include it in the motion.
You'll be working with the staff nonetheless, okay? Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve in a second by the chair. Can we bring up any more discussion? Okay, can we bring up the portal, please? Okay, that'll pass out of this chamber on a six to zero for consideration of approval. No, final?
Final.
Final, sorry, sorry. I can never remember, sorry. Final approval. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein, I saw you lean back. Final approval by the commission for your application. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that'll take us to our next case. I hope those are happy tears.
Those are.
Good, that's good. Okay, we're going to Agenda Item Number Eight, Case Number 23-15P, a rezoning case for the Johnson Hookup LLC. Is someone here for the primary spokesperson for this case?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward and give us your name and address.
My name is Percy Johnson. I live at, the area that we're referring to is on South Lake Shore Drive, and I was born in 1953, and as long as I have been living, that place has been there as an RV setup and account for individuals to come and have picnics, family reunions, and we just wanted to make it that official to where it's in some proper writing to that's what this area is for.
Okay, do we have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Jean.
Madam Chair, we do make sure that we do have an address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
8140 South Lake Shore Drive.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Stephen, sorry. Okay, do we have any questions for the speaker? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else here that's in favor of this application? Okay, please come forward. Oh, you're just in favor, okay. Dearly noted, all right. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of the application, please step forward. Okay, since I see no one at this point, let's ask for anybody that's in opposition of this to please come forward.
My name is Alan Strickland. I live at 8152 South Lake Shore, which is right to the west of the property. I'm not really against the deal. I went on and tried to find out what OS was, and I cannot find out what that zoning is. I don't know what, as far as alcohol, can be sold there. I haven't seen a site plan for how many trailers or whatever in there, and my concern is more for the future. I mean, I know what he says is great, and that's wonderful because we've lived there for seven-plus years and have been very good, they've been very good neighbors. So if that's what we're talking about, I have no problem, but I would wish somebody could explain to me what zoning OS means.
Okay, we can get that for you right here.
Open space.
Okay, let me just say.
Well, it just allows for like camping, RVs, picnic tables, stuff like that.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, it's open space is what it is. So I mean, he's not putting up a whole bunch of structures.
Right.
It's all stuff that can kind of be moved around, and so it's more for, you know, to bring people in that want to, you know, hang out in nature.
Okay, that's cool. That's great.
And I don't know, Jean, if that's a good enough.
I'm prepared to give the answer. There is one other exception. Jean, would you explain to them about the marina component because of the Cross Lake?
Mr. Jean, before you start, may I say something, please, just so we can keep this structured? He made mention about a site plan. My understanding is today we're just looking at the zoning, so can you explain that as well?
That's correct. I'm prepared to answer his question and also speak to that as well.
Go right ahead.
So the open space district is, and I'm going to go ahead and just kind of go through the intent section of the code. It's intended to provide and protect open space and public recreational facilities. The types of things that you can have there include agriculture, which you can grow food, bus transfer station, campground, cemetery, community center, community garden, conservation area, country club, cultural facility, food truck and food truck vendors, and a driving range like for golf and a public park. That's all of the uses are allowed. Now, they're also in what is called the Cross Lake Overlay District, and I'm sure your property is also within that. Because it's located in that district, things like a marina and RV park are allowed with a special use permit. And so what is happening today is just the rezoning. They will have to come back with a site plan and everything for the use when we do the approval, and it will come back to this body. So no more detail will be provided, but for right now, they just want to go ahead and get the base zoning changed so their use, they would have a pathway to get to that use. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, makes a lot of sense. And like I said, they've got a bait shop there, and they've got a launch, and I have no problem with that. I mean, I just wanted to find out, so I would, you know, my thing would be, and like I said, I'm not worried about too much on this one, but what happens, you know, if it gets sold again, you know, because I'm sure that, I mean, it's a beautiful spot. I mean, that's a wonderful location. I mean, we love it, and I'd hate to see it, you know, commercialized in some way. So that's really the only reason I was here is just to kind of get my head wrapped around the situation.
So if you want to see more clarity in exactly what they're doing when they come back, we will be sending out notices just like we did last time, and you'll be able to come back and see what it's about.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, hold on just a second, sir. Let me make sure nobody from the staff has, from the board has a question for you. Does anybody have any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thanks. Okay, is there anybody else here that would like to speak in opposition of the case? Opposition. Okay, seeing none. Board, do I have a motion on this case?
I move that we accept the request to rezone the property from RA to OS.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Marshy to accept the zoning as submitted and a second by Mr. Brown. Any need for discussion, board?
No.
Okay, can you bring up the voting portal, please? All right, that is six in favor and zero against. So, Mr. Jean?
Yes, ma'am.
It's all right.
Pardon me.
So I just want to make sure, because I get a little confused. This is a final on this one, or it goes to parish commission? I get this wrong every time.
All zoning cases are recommendations only.
Okay.
When you're dealing with special exception use and you're dealing with variances, those are final decisions unless appealed, and if they're appealed, then they would go to.
Okay, so this one will advance to the parish commission for final approval. Just want to make sure I get that right.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number Nine, Case 23-7BAP. This is a variance for Rayleigh and Associates Incorporated. Is there anyone here from Rayleigh and Associates for this case? Please come forward.
This is for Scarpeno?
Yeah.
Correct.
Hi, I'm Stephen Proct. I live at 2512 Lake Crest Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71109. I own several lots on Scarpeno Road, and the subdivision was done, I think, 60 or 70 years ago. The road is primarily manufactured homes, but the lots that I own are, I have some vacant lots that I'm looking to bring in some brand-new manufactured homes, and it's, the lots are smaller than one acre, so I just want to do it the right way and bring those lots into conformity. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, board, do we have any questions for the speaker?
No.
Okay, I'm hearing no's. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, is there anybody else here that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this application? In favor? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to come in opposition of the application? All right, I don't see anybody in opposition either. All right, do we have a motion from the board?
I'll move that we accept the variance to the dimensional standards for this RA zone property.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Marshy to accept the variance to the lot size dimensions. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I hear Mr. Humphrey first, second by Mr. Humphrey. All right, any need for discussion? Okay, this is going to be a quick meeting. All right, can we bring up the voting portal, please? All right. All right, we have six in favor and nobody in opposition for this variance. All right, that ends our, thank you, sir, for coming in. That ends our public hearing. And that one's final, right?
Yep. Final variance.
I've got it written, no?
Unless appealed.
Unless appealed, okay, got you. All right, that ends the public hearing section of our meeting today. That takes us to Agenda Item Number 10, which is the committee chair report, and I've asked Mr. Brown to talk to us a little bit about the committee for master plan UDC. So, Mr. Brown, would you just kind of update the body at large on what happened in the meeting and kind of where we went with it?
Okay, so Laura, Ms. Green, and me, we met upstairs on the fourth floor, and we kind of started digging into the United Development Code. So we started at the front. We're kind of in the residential area right now, and so what we're trying to do is actually make it a lot more simpler. So, because I mean, we pretty much approve everything that comes through the board, and it just seems like there's just a lot of rules that just really don't fit in with the lifestyle that a lot of these people are living, you know? So we're trying to just simplify the codes a little bit, and a lot of it's already been done. They had put something together back when, you know, there was a lot of upheaval because people were getting tickets and stuff, so the MPC staff has actually done a lot of the work already with doing some amendments. We just haven't, those just haven't been approved or been put through yet. So that's kind of what we're looking through right now, and we plan on meeting again, and that's about it. If y'all have any questions. But it's just trying to make it a lot more simpler, you know? Stuff like gravel road, like you can, you know, that's what we're trying to do, is just make it to where there's just not so many stipulations that we kind of feel are unnecessary in some instances.
Okay. Ms. Green, would you like to add anything to that?
I think it's passed perfect, that overview is, the overview was well stated, no additional comments.
Okay. All right, any questions from anybody else on the board? Okay, we do need to get another meeting time?
Yes.
So we can pick up where we left off?
Yes.
Okay?
And did we state that we had a tentative, we want to come back with our finalization?
Well, we definitely want to, I think it's going to take, because it's so long, it's definitely going to take some more time, a couple more meetings, but then we actually want to have all of y'all look at it and actually give your thoughts on it, too, you know? So that's what we were.
I think at some point, the staff is going to, and Mr. Bernstein had a conflict in his schedule. He was intending on sitting in with us on that meeting, so he was unable to make that first one. Mr. Bernstein, is that something that you anticipate that you'll be able to meet, you know, with each time that we meet? I just want to make sure we keep you in the loop, if that's what, if you want that communication.
No, I would generally be available, but was it that particular day?
Right.
Conflict that I wouldn't be able to get out of.
So you, but you have an interest in going forward with each meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Jean, we never really, I think, talked formally about how many of the staff, if any, in the staff wanted to attend that, so I just kind of need some feedback on that.
I'll discuss that with Mr. Clark.
Okay.
I think for the most part, he wanted to give a lot of autonomy to the committee.
Okay, okay.
So that they, you know, they could express themselves, but obviously, if you need some technical assistance in answering some questions, obviously, we would be glad to provide staff for that.
Okay.
But for the most part, I think he wanted you to be filled to, free to very candidly look at the proposed items and discuss them freely, but if you need our assistance, just let us know, and we will provide.
And I think that works with kind of what we had envisioned, talking between the three of us. I will say, and y'all tell me if you don't agree with this, but having set in the meeting that we're going to most definitely have to have input. Once we get down to what we would anticipate presenting, to get the details of how we see that zoning working. Does that make sense, like the details of it?
So if you're requesting staff to attend, just let us know.
Okay, we're not at this point, but I foresee after we get through this that we probably are definitely going to want that.
That's kind of what we had, Mr. Clark and I had to discuss.
Okay.
Let you look at it completely alone, without our influence at all.
Okay.
And then there's probably going to be a point when you may have some questions about what some of the intent was, and then we'll be able to walk you through that and then take guidance from you of what to do from that point on.
Okay, all right. Is there any other comments or questions about that?
So do you want to schedule something now or after this meeting?
Let's just wait till after the meeting, and we can get through, and then we'll let Mr. Bernstein know as well, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Now, that then takes us to Agenda Item Number 11, which is new business. Do we have any new business, Mr. Jean?
No, we do not.
Anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up?
Well, I'd like to say something, I guess, on behalf of our committee here, and we know that there's been a death, of course, Mr. Clark's wife passed. But I'd like for us, as a committee here, if we don't mind, to pick up a little collection, maybe get a flower or something for him on our behalf, because, you know, just for the sake of being, you know, kind and friendly.
That sounds good to me. I sponsored this earlier today, a tree, because that was an option, but y'all count me in on anything. Are you going to spearhead that for us, Damon?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Okay, so why don't we just see Damon after the meeting, and we'll do something collectively? Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jean, did you have anything under new business?
Not under new business.
Okay.
I did have just a brief, some brief comments to make.
Okay, all right.
The director's report.
All right, so under the director's comment?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that takes us to number 12.
I do, I do want to bring up one thing.
Sure.
So I had Marissa White call me last week. I guess she got a zoning violation letter from the police officer, and I guess it's kind of moved way forward for her, because it's, I think this all happened before our board was formed. But she sent me a text with the zoning violation, and it's crazy, because I mean, it looks like she would be, she's over by Walter Beach Jacobs Park, which is kind of right down the road from where I live, and she's at 8800 Blanchard Fur Road, and I guess she has an accessory dwelling that wasn't approved on her property, and we spoke for a little while about it, and I guess her mom is really sick and is living in the accessory dwelling unit that wasn't approved. All this happened way before the board, and I guess it's going to court, and so, I mean, I've just heard what she had to say about it, but I guess there's two structures on there. She's got like a couple acres of land, I think like five, and I guess one of the recommendations was maybe to split the land to be able to do it that way, but I don't know, she's kind of in a hardship right now, and I'm trying to see, you know, I mean, she's trying to take care of her mom, and then I guess her daughter's lost her job and is also living at home also now, and her business isn't doing good, and I just kind of feel sorry for her, and I was just trying to see if there's anything that we, our board could possibly do to see, or if it's already, you know, since it's going, because I think it's going through the courts right now, I think that's what the citation was for. It's Marissa White.
Has she contacted the staff?
She actually called me, but I don't know if she's talked to the MPC staff.
That matter has been in zoning enforcement for quite some time.
I think so.
I think Mr. Jordan can probably speak to their efforts of trying to bring that property into compliance.
You want to get in on that, Mr. Jordan? You want to give us an update?
Well, the update is basically what he said. I mean, that is the update, but like Mr. Bernstein was saying, this has been a situation for quite some time, probably two, three years.
Okay.
I can tell you exactly if I look it up, but that's, it's been, it's been definitely.
I think I know what area it is. I've traveled that path a lot yet.
And the violation is that there are.
Three.
Accessory structures on the property that are not allowed, and so it's not, that's the problem is, you know, but they've been, they've had numerous letters from the zoning enforcement office, and then the matter was referred to us because it did not come into compliance, and they did not, you know, correct the violation of the matter which referred to us, referred to the DA's office.
So one of the work, one of the answers to that would be separation? Is that what I'm hearing, Jake?
No.
Separation of land?
Yeah, I guess so or something. I mean, I don't, I just don't know that. I've just heard from her side of it that it's like five acres of land and that there's multiple structures that weren't approved on it, but she's got elderly family members and stuff like that living in them, and a daughter, so, and I mean, I looked it up on Google Maps, and it is a big tract of land. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I don't, I mean, I know now, if she would have came to the board, it probably would have been approved, so.
There are oftentimes in situations like this, there are several different approaches that we can take. Some of it, sometimes it's subdivisions, sometimes it's just simply to get an accessory approval. We'd have to go back and.
Well, I'm confused, because the citation she sent me that was dated June 21st, it references Chapter 54, which, you know, if she's in the five-mile zone, we're not Chapter 54 anymore. Are we still sending out citations with Chapter 54 on it? Are we still sending out citations with chapter fifty-four on it?
I will have to look at the citation form and see if it referenced the old chapter or not.
I've, I've got it right here if you want to see it later.
But I'm not going to speak on it.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I think the best answer is, is let staff look into this.
Okay.
So that we can, instead of trying to do this on the fly in a meeting, we can, we can report with more detail at a later time.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm, that I understand how old this is. You said it's been going on for a while. Can you tell me what, how, what does old mean?
I can't do it.
Okay.
That leaves two years.
That leaves two years, okay. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna pitch that to Mr. Clark, Mr. Jean, and they're going to look into this to see if there's anything, even though it looks like it's headed to litigation, to see if there's, I mean, I don't know what can be expected here because it seems like we're deep in this process, guys.
Generally, I just will tell you that sending this on for, for enforcement prosecution is the, is really after we've exhausted every, every avenue. We just, that's not the first step. That's the last step. And we generally try to explore all avenues with applicants before we, we, we get it to, moved up to legal. And that's, that's just where, for every, every violation that we do, we try to explore ways to say yes or get a yes, but sometimes it's not always possible to do that.
All right, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Brown. Okay, so let's move on to number twelve, the director's report. Mr. Jean, I think you have a couple things you wanted to say here.
I mainly just wanted to talk about the, the fact that, you know, Mr. Clark, of course, had a death in his family, it was his wife Brenda. It was just a week ago, and of course, we are, as staff, I just want to thank all the staff members that have been extremely supportive and stepped up their game, because when one of us is hurting, all of us is hurting, and, and it really showed me what we're, the character of this staff, and how compassionate they are. He hopes to be able to return next week if, if possible. There's still a lot of details that he's wrapping up, and obviously, you know, this is a, a very traumatic event in his life, but he does want to stay busy. And so we will, we'll more than likely see him, you know, sometime next week, but probably not much for the rest of the week. If there's anything anybody needs, be sure to, to call my office, and, and we'll be glad to, you know, to, either we'll handle it ourselves or we'll, we'll assign the, the staff member that's appropriate for that and, and get it taken care of.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to say that today's work meeting went really good. It was streamlined, and so I appreciate you stepping in and, and leading us in that, so thank you for, for that effort, and thank you for the staff for being there for Mr. Clark. It is definitely a heartbreaking situation, and I feel for him. Okay, so now we're at public comments. Do we have anyone in here that would like to make a comment to the board about anything? I don't see anybody in the lobby unless, I can't see everywhere, but I don't think I see anybody. All right. Um, okay, so number thirteen is the chair, or the board members' comments. Do we have anything that anybody from the board needs to speak about or would like to make comments on, or? Mr. Bernstein, do you have anything, any update for, on anything, and no long-range planning committee meeting or anything of that nature on the board?
Other than the case on Cockwood Road, the zoning case that came before you all, that Ms. Perkins did appeal that to district court, and that's where it is right now.
Okay, all right. Did that get a final approval from the parish?
It did.
It did receive final approval?
It got final approval on May the fourth.
On the C one?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Do y'all, y'all know which case he's talking about? Jersey Gold and Cockwood Road?
Yes.
Is the antique store?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that one, okay.
The, the former church property that Ms. Johnson was purchasing for nineteen.
Yes, okay, that's the one he's speaking. He's just saying that it's, it's been appealed and it's moving on to district court, so, okay? All right, um, let me get a calendar real quick. I just, I get asked this after every meeting. I just should have been prepared, but. So we're going into the month of July, so it looks like our meeting for July is going to be on the twenty-sixth. Does everybody agree? The twenty-sixth of July, the Fourth Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we, so everybody mark your calendar accordingly, twenty-sixth of July, and, and the staff will send out whatever time. Ms. Shari, thank you for getting our lunch today. We do appreciate that. It's very nice. I've been involved in this for three and a half years now. It's the first time I've been fed lunch, so. I appreciate it. Chips can only go so far, even though we do appreciate those, too. All right, any other comments?
Mr. Jordan just reminded me, remember the case we had, the shed in the front yard that was appealed to parish commission?
Could you, could you speak to that again? I couldn't hear you.
The one where we had the shed that was in the front yard. Y'all remember that case?
It was appealed to?
Parish commission. It would have been final had it, had it not been appealed, and it was.
So it's appealed to the parish commission?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That was the one that we didn't have anybody hear for the case, correct? Yeah.
Is that the one with the shed that was almost?
We didn't have an, we didn't have an applicant for the, for the case here. We only had opposition.
If you remember, there were, there was a request for deferral.
Yes.
The deferral was denied.
Yes, right, correct.
Then you, then you voted to deny.
Correct, yes, sir. It's in One North Place, if I'm not mistaken, the neighborhood, One North Place out in New York.
Don Van Cooper.
That was the one with the shed that was in the front.
It's on the, yeah.
It's a site obstruction.
That's the one that's bad.
I'm trying to be nice, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Appreciate you reminding me of that. We don't have anything else.
Yes, sir. Okay, all right, so that, let me just make sure I understand. So that's going to the parish commission for reconsideration of our decision to deny.
It's an appeal.
It's an appeal, okay, so they'll, they'll, they'll sit in judgment on it from here?
They'll either, they have three choices.
Okay.
They can, they can uphold the decision, they can overturn the decision, or they can remand it back.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure I understand that, because this is, I think this is the first time we've had this situation since this new board came about.
It doesn't happen very often.
Okay, anything else? Anything else from the staff? No? Mr. Jordan, you're good? Okay. All right, well, looking for those magic words, Mr. Marshy.
I'll go with that adjournment.
All right, Mr. Marshy moves that adjournment, say goodbye from Mr. Humphrey, meeting is closed.